We can all rise from the pleasant pleasantries. This is Ailu Chu.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, its standers, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a item number two.
I'd like to make a motion to remove one treasure present since our third officer is here this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Treasure, and then treasure, we have roll call, please.
Mrs. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
Mrs. Del Delberger?
Aye.
All right, moving to, I mean, wait, roll call, we can have that, please, Madam Treasure.
Mrs. Del Delberger?
Here.
Mrs. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Walsh?
Here.
All right, we will do our duty with our existing and board norms that I can ask board member, our authority goes if he does not mind, please.
Sure. We believe all persons to be valuable, we will unconditionally serve, support, and inspire. Therefore, every cruiser will maximize their unique purpose, potential, and power to produce the results they want. Board norms, as leaders of the district, we will always strive to, number one, support the mission and vision of the district. Number two, be prepared, informed, and ready for meetings. Number three, respect one another as elected representatives of the community, be open-minded, recognize one another's strengths, the value of diverse perspectives, and mutual commitment to the mission and vision of the district. Number four, allow members to complete their thoughts and statements before others comment. Allow members to be heard and listen to all perspectives with an open mind. Number five, stay focused on the tasks at hand and respectfully redirect each other when needed. Number six, maintain confidentiality and communicate forward policies, ensure trust and transparency in all dealings. And number seven, after a vote is passed, lead meetings united as one voice no matter the outcome.
Thank you so much, Madam Treasure. I can see agenda purple is there, okay.
Salute.
Second.
Right, Madam Treasure, we can have roll call.
Mrs. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Fowler?
Aye.
Mrs. Del Delberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Walsh?
Aye.
All right, I don't think most of us continue as agenda.
Zookahood, recommend to Riverport Madison Schools Board of Education approve the bus stops for 2022-2023 school year follows. Revised listing will be presented to the board meeting. Make sure where those hard copies have been printed right now, so a lot of prime copies in both PDF and Excel formats earlier today. And then we will have those added to the board agenda for official record tomorrow when Madam Treasure is back in the office.
Some of the--
Second.
Evening, were those, well, I mean, after discussion after, right? Don't make discussion now?
We--
Were those ones who checked us, those are the revised?
Correct, yes.
I did have something on the high school list, and this was the regular high school, not special needs. It looked like Route 280, they had a PM but not an AM route.
So Chris Reed, as I said, is running copies right now, so we all have hard copies. But we do have itself a CBS representative here in plan. So CBS, you want to come up or are you able to respond to that?
Good evening. Hey, everyone, hi. Regarding your question to Route 280, any digits that are high in that 80 mark, 80, 80 plus, actually it's 77 plus, please forgive me, are special needs routes. They have a different afternoon route than they would a morning route. So the obverse of that, I may have picked it up, I apologize. I may have accidentally picked it up into the regular route, but that is a special route.
Okay, yeah, because it was, well, yeah, because it shows like it starts with Route 280.
Two would be middle school.
And this is only a tab for--
I'm sorry, I apologize if I--
Middle school, but it was called the middle school.
Well, maybe that--
So I guess--
So--
And high school route, exactly, about one-on-one?
Yes, high schools are 100s, middle schools would be 200s, and your elementaries are 300s. We're in the process of renumbering non-publics to 400s and in such. But capacity is not allowing many riders right now until we can put some more routes on for the non-publics.
Kathy, one thing that I know, what your question, which is part of the reason we did not take action on this meeting last week. Can you address some of the safety concerns about limitations of certain hours of crossing have been addressed in this most recent--
They have. They have, there was questions about refugee trucks in. There were several routes that were in question, were crossing. Those crossings have been removed and the buses rerouted, unless I have missed one.
So I just have one question. I see where there could be, there is a cross where Rockwood should be on the high school special needs route, the rise in child change stop at refugee. That is a busy, that, or that's--
We are, yes. They could, they could be indicating an intersection.
It does, it just says, yeah, okay.
But there's a pull off, there's also one that we pull into the backend of sheets to pick off.
And then the equrite ones, those are like people's actual homes, because that's all address, so we're south, okay, so that's what actually the house address is. And then the basic ones, regardless of the route, do you, like, for the strap or do you like, is or do you stop on--
I mean, we pull in.
Oh, in strap or in, okay. And then they all end up like having like the tussling and spin around, because I actually see my girl's daycare, so I think I see somebody that can run for it. Do you guys go in the developing or do you stop right on outside of the park, like, or even going upstairs and coming back the other way?
I didn't understand that, I'm sorry, but we do pull off the--
Is it apartment complex by Independence, so is that, or your, did the bus door to the right--
Yeah, it's, it's right in front of the apartments.
Okay, and that's for drop-off campaign, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just, I just literally did a control look at us, we're all like, busy, let's make sure those were square. Thank you so much, very good job, I appreciate it.
And if we have missed any, please, please bring it to my attention. It could have printed as a stop and we may have moved the stop, but we missed removing the stop from the stop route. If that made any sense. Okay, let me explain to you, I'm sorry, Mrs. Walsh. If you can, you can take all of the students off of a stop in the software, but then you have to also remove that stop. If you don't remove the stop, it has a zero count, meaning no one's getting on at it. But we'll have to go through and manually take the stop away.
So essentially, that route, there's no, there's no kids on it, but it still, it still might show up, aren't people here?
As a stop, correct.
I don't know if there's zero, because we saw the PDF, but this will give us the count, and I don't necessarily see it on the Excel spreadsheet, so we would know it's a--
No. I, I didn't know if I would be permitted to give you the stop numbers, because then that starts to, you know, I could, I could give them to you.
No, we, 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 we live on our--
Oh, I-- I understand, but if there are any in question that I, that I have possibly missed, I would be more than happy to look them up for you and report to you or make sure that they're moved.
And I guess I would say this, this will not be the final revision. As we get more buses, routes will change, we'll, we'll do some things. And, and as our board policy identifies, I have the authority to change those routes, but the UCA update is once a month, a lot of changes. So we will, best month, we probably, as you see, that's a lot, what happens to change, we're working fast. And, and, you know, if there are things on there that are inherent or in some cases, pairs will, will, I don't know, that's because they don't apply some group of pairs. And so we'll assess if the stops are recorded or not, we'll constantly change this, because we want to make sure to save resources. We still have a lot of kids, yeah, we will be sure. And we need to have since these, I don't know, like, we're, we're just telling the world, we need to-- You have, so, that's a little bit, I can't even--
Kathy, that's happened because of, we're on yard after the change that can identify, and I don't think software does this, like, a chain report, and why, which connects, like, we're on, very, so, so, when I, we know, we know the chance we're looking at versus on the entire, I mean, if the high school route assistance is paying along, then that's not including all the other PBS, is there a way to do that? Will we get into the software to kind of have a, a way to, a march change, to be able to order it, align it, or do you change? That would be helpful.
Well, I would agree with Kathy, though, in her response. When we started with this last year, and we got the month through the board, there was a whole army in there, and it was really awesome. So what we asked, we proposed only the changes. So these are our basic point, and so we realized some changes to the areas, so the board can see only the kinds of changes. And I assume that that's possible. I would like to respond now, that has to ideally have an ask for only the changes we were, so it's not a whole line, they're gonna go back and be kind of fair, somehow aside, versus--
Well, I understand that, I would, yeah, I, I get that. I will call the software company, I do not know that there is one. However, we could easily, we have some, we have some, we have a lot of trainees, okay? And we could, we could sit down with a set and at least highlight them and put them into a, a summary for you.
And as I said, you probably do a deal with the process, and if you use a sale, that would actually know the software, you should spend out free meetings.
Ma'am, I do not, I, I cannot answer that question, I don't know.
But I would--
It would be great if it did, wouldn't it? I will, thank you. We use Versatrans, it is under a hosted ver, a hosted environment of Versatrans.
So I talked about that, we have 103 routes. And so how many buses are currently in this 103 route?
There are actually 41 routes, ma'am. So as you, as you like stack them up, 41 is the number.
Okay, yeah, because there was something to move about.
Correct, we have 42 buses that are viable and able to run in the lot today. And one of them is, is acting up. So I was very reluctant to put up, put on that extra route, because I don't have a good feeling it's going to make it through tomorrow morning's route. It's just acting up, and we don't know why right now. We have in 44 buses that belong to Riverport Madison Schools, two of which have warranted engine failure lights on, and they have to go to the dealership for repair. We have an appointment, it could, we could get in there as early as next week, that's what they told us, we were very shocked by. But the buses are not capable of running in the state that they're in. It will void the warranty and potentially ruin your engine.
Do you know what year this bus is part?
They're relatively new, ma'am, I'm going to say 2019s possibly, it could even be 20s, 21s, but they are definitely under warranty, and you want to treat those with kid's gloves so that you don't void that.
All right, so back to the bus stops.
Yes, ma'am.
Back, um, I have two people here at the last meeting brought their stuff, and I was told on my way here to this meeting that they tried their students and it was about change. One of those was, can I have this log, check the bus number and that number change? If the voyage has a process, we're good. So my question is, how would you know these bus problems and refuse to assure them?
More than a point in, have his kids names on it. You didn't get the students' names on it?
No.
Did you just, I just did a--
No, no. Was that-- So for what you can show, for what--
Oh, I think I should be saying the student who said it wrong.
No, um, so for what you can show, for another, and it's, it was, we got surprised, we're gonna ask a lot of students, I have the best student right off the top, and, um, doesn't like, which is probably, or, 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 people, that's the, right here, um, there's students, and I have to go, a lot of people, where I walked, two of us, yeah, that, uh, have nowhere. And then there's a pair, well, on there, a lot of them have this, um, for, um, it is a time to save routes, so, you save route, a lot of, you can, you can, my, my here, they have--
Sidewalks are not required by law.
Sidewalks--
They're not required.
Are they dropped before?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Yes.
But I mean--
And you're sure-- Right?
Okay, I would have to explore that, I was assured by the driver that that refugee stop was changed, that there was no cross.
Were they provided a lot?
Should not be. Because it's a two-lane road and the speed is too great.
Have all of these updates been put in system for the parents and students to identify?
Yeah, they're live, once, if something's updated, if it gets, if it changes tomorrow morning, they can see it immediately.
Okay.
Everything changes live.
We also sent a message out at about 6:30 to tell people that routes are updated, and you can check the first appearance link for that.
Okay.
We made, would you like, I, I did several changes for tomorrow morning, we had significantly late routes to the high school special needs, those have been changed, the route was added for that. Route 14 was a huge problem, that's also been split and changed for tomorrow.
Yes, Rob, it's one that has been on a--
We split that and changed it, so it's, it's actually half of what it was. That's been repaired, Route 27 was repaired as well, we had some problems with that, with an overload, but the buses are full.
What's your anticipation for this coming week as far as land buses?
It will be much, much better than it was last week. We have not identified significantly late buses that we haven't moved some stops or made some changes to. So as long as everything runs well with the drivers behind the wheel, we should be in good shape tomorrow. I would not say that they're not going to, could we get, could get 10 minutes behind or something like that, but as far as these significantly late routes, no. If we find some other indication that there's a problem occurring, we'll be adjusting as the week goes on. State Patrol comes in tomorrow morning, we have three buses sitting there to get inspected. We picked up four, but one I don't think is going to go through inspection.
We have other buses to pay back for, also pursuing getting the final five remaining buses from the original, so, so, so. Depending on whether it's coordinated, maybe buses, either we try to pick up some buses who've been entered, we're not going to do that, we just, we have a loss, but we're, 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 also, maybe buses here inside, we will, we need to do more outreach areas, but we will also, we should, to be sure, to be sure of other buses over there.
Also, we add that to our, completely, the buses that we have, and I have prepared students to be, being, uh--
Yes, ma'am.
So what I think we're going to do, whatever we did, where we can ask right now, tomorrow people to, that's the, the last one. We have, we have three more, four, and they have-- How do you determine that the last rated route, you know, we never, how do you determine that's operated, two and three and a half to go to the stop?
Attempt clear view in, for 200 feet, I'll just remind, it's not on the crest of the hill or around a bend. They do not need sidewalks per law, and they can walk up to a half mile to a stop.
Well, I understand, what the first level, the, the, how, how your company, and how the district determine that stop, essentially, and if they're on, for all the stop, you, you check it, how you check it, I don't think you, like, bend the road or a hill, five hundred feet, side line, or, how you, really make sure, or do you make sure that, you may ask for, this, that, to have that, in the crash?
Our first line of defense is when the drivers go out and do their dry runs, they indicate to us that something looks odd or that's not a safe route. The veteran drivers here came to us with a number of them before you even saw the first set of routes that were corrected. The software does not do that, okay? It'll, it'll, it'll let you cross anywhere, it'll let you cross a highway if you allow. So our best eyes are the drivers coming and telling us, or the parents calling, and when they let us know, we make the change to the route. If it's in question, we go to the site and we look it over. But if--
But then how you, stop is still unsafe, then how do you tell if the route you're about to be a shooting to walk?
It would be the same thing, ma'am, if, if there's a question, the, the parent calls and question that they have a concern, we would go out and take a look and put things over, and if it's deemed unsafe, or maybe there's a safer route to the bus stop for them that we could help them with, we would work in conjunction with the parent to provide that to them.
So what I'm saying is, I have a couple parents, more than two, a few parents who have called the district, some have made, were meeting, a lot were meeting, and, oh, all the, I'm here, they're, uh, in fact, and still, in route with their student, so the man, we do--
So this will, so after 6:30 tonight, I'm checking related route information.
You can do that, please.
All right, and then you saw, could you see people, at night, after 6:30, or they were getting, a lot of, they were getting a lot of information, and that's--
Yes. Well, since we're, we're-- So they're meeting, the, 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 and all else that we have, we're, we're, after, because that's not, right now, you not, you're, for shots, for shooting. But with the, the, asking about, we did--
Yes, they do, unless the student was added after I printed those.
And we got this, right? And that was wrong?
No, ma'am, I was adding students until the time I walked out of that bus garage up there to come up here to this meeting. I've added stops, that's why--
Also, we have, may not be up to date, so what you're saying.
That's very possible, because, and they, and they, they cannot be up to date, because routing is a fluid, is a, as you know this, it's fluid.
If, if, I can imagine, so you able to tell me where that address is, bus stop is?
Yes, ma'am. But not here, I don't have the software in front of me, if I did, yes, I could.
It's my address, we cannot tell, but the bus stop would be covered, that, you can't say someone's individual address.
We can definitely--
They're--
We can do that offline.
Okay.
The other thing I'll say is--
We don't know, it's a little bit of shame, you're asking us to, to, that may not be--
This is, this is all, per your request, you wanted all the stop information on Saturday. And I said that we would, we could, we can, if it's not, yes, CBS, at some point, to give us the stops, to give to board members, to have a review for the meeting tonight, be anything to give to all the stops, to have that. So it is what you have, that was pretty, for, today, exactly, right, we could give you a record, no, but that's what we're going to, the, 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 and it's changing, we're going to change, we're going to have it, tonight, tomorrow, we continue to refine and improve. I don't think it has to be to improve, it's, I just, it's happening, it's bad, and it's that I was, 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 I
Yeah, and I would, um, it was, 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 so that we can, with this, then we have the, 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 and then everybody, we can, 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 I hope that they have a real, 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 a last, that I, 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 and that's basically, that, 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 and then I don't think, hang on, the students, or, 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 and, the, 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 I, 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 I,